Hello again, everybody, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I'm Teddy Panos coming to you from the WellPoint Studios here in beautiful downtown Lowell. And today, we're going to offer an inside view to another one of the candidates seeking office here in the city of Lowell. He is a candidate in the District Seven City Council seat, AKA The Acre, as they call it. My original neighborhood when I was born here. But he is joining us here in the WellPoint Studios. Jose Cervantes is with us. How are you, Jose?
Pretty good, pretty good, excited, nervous. Can't wait to see what the people think.
All the usual stuff that first time politicians feel.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's great.
Well, I'm glad to have you here, and we're going to talk a little bit about your campaign, your candidacy, the issues that are important to you. We'll talk a little bit about the issues that are making news today and could throughout the rest of the campaign. And if folks haven't met you yet or haven't seen you on social media, you're a guy who's not shy to say what he wants to say.
No, no, can't be, you can't be, you know, you gotta be honest, you know?
All right, well, we certainly appreciate that, and we look forward to discussion. Let me quickly thank our Inside Lowell Podcast sponsors, our friends at WellPoint. At WellPoint, your whole health is their whole point. Thanks as well to Washington Savings Bank, banking that feels like home. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank. TMI Properties, quality and value at every price point. Find your perfect space with TMI. Mahoney Oil, providing warmth and protection in Greater Lowell, Southern New Hampshire since nineteen twenty-five. The Greater Lowell Community Foundation, improving the quality of life in Greater Lowell through strategic impactful philanthropy. Francis E. Prevention Insurance, the agency Greater Lowell has counted on since nineteen eighty-two. Real Estate Ray Booton, licensed realtor, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. You can find him online, realestateraybooton.com. And by the Massachusetts Pirates, bringing all the hard-hitting action and excitement of arena football to the mill city. Thank you to our Inside Lowell sponsors. Thank you to Jose Cervantes for patiently obliging me while I thank the people who keep the lights on in here. All right, first time candidate, this is your first run for office. I never ran for school president or a school senator or anything, right?
No, sir.
All right, so let's introduce you to the folks out there. Who are you? Who is Jose Cervantes? And why does he want to represent District Seven, The Acre, as a city councillor?
First things first, everybody at home watching, well, on your phone, wherever you're watching, thank you. Thank you for watching, keep it up. You know, we gotta do something. I'll get back to that in a second. My name's Jose Cervantes. Like Teddy said, for the ones that haven't seen me on social media, the ones that haven't seen me around town, just walking around with my hat and trying to talk to you. Most of the time, some of you don't want to, but you still have to listen. But, you know, I came here when I was two years old with my mother and my brother from Mexico, bouncing around. We lived in California, East L.A., we lived in Florida, moved back and forth a few times. I've been here for about thirty-two years, since third grade, you know, permanently. I lived everywhere in the city from Middlesex Street to Austin Street, right there in front of Clemente Park. But, you know, really, what I want people to know is why I'm running. We could spend an hour talking about me and my story, and, you know, some people listen to it, and they're like, oh, my God, you're an inspiration. To me, I'm a success story, because there were so many immigrants that went through what I've been through that unfortunately didn't make a life for themselves. We'll just say that, interpret that however you want. But the reason I'm running is that I've always had, I've always been intrigued by, not the politics of it, but representing the people. You know, that leadership, you know, there's bosses and there's leaders, we've all heard that. You know, a boss tells you what to do, a leader shows you and walks with you. I don't like the leadership we have anywhere right now. The leadership in City Hall, I'm not, I'm not bashing anybody, but I just mean at the top. So what do we do? Everything's, every, what is it, was the saying, oh, politics are local politics? Okay, so let's look at the local politics. Start by looking at voter turnout. Eight thousand four hundred and fifteen registered voters in The Acre. Five hundred and thirty-five people voted in twenty twenty-three. To me, that's some of the most important elections. Would I be lying to you if I told you that I did? No, I didn't. I think in November would be eight years that I became a citizen. To me, I was jumping for joy, get to vote every two years. Then I'm like, two years ago, I'm like, yeah, but what about them? I'm like, oh, shit, we vote every year. What the heck? That's not okay, like, I thought I was doing, first thing you say is when you become a citizen is to be involved in your local politics, to write, it's a little dated, it tells you to write letters to your newspaper, who the heck does that anymore? But, you know, and I'm like, I thought I was doing my civil duty, but I'm not. So then I open up the books, see five hundred and thirty-five, I see there's seven thousand five hundred, just a little over in all of Lowell. Hundred and fifteen thousand plus? Seventy-five thousand plus registered? Barely ten percent, lowest voter turnout since the Civil War era? And we're complaining? Why are you complaining about? You don't care enough to vote, then you don't care enough to complain. Cut it out. So I started looking more into it, I'm like, well, hold on, this is kind of like a fifty-fifty issue, don't you think? Don't you think it's also the candidates and the, to know, for the people to know them?
So not to interrupt your story, but I have found, and the older I get, I'd like to think I get a little wiser, and I ultimately think that voter turnout is driven by either an issue or the issues, or it's driven by exciting challengers, the incumbents. Funny, if you watch today's Daily Pulse, which you probably haven't had a chance of you yet, I was talking about that with the city's former election director, what, you know, why is turnout continuously go down, even though we spend more time and money trying to get people to vote? You've been, you've been very critical on social media of not specific people, but just people in general who have chosen to sit out elections, like you did. You admit, you did in twenty twenty-three, you didn't vote. What, what gets somebody in that mindset to you? And how do you change that mindset? How will you convince people like you two years ago that, no, no, this is important in twenty twenty-five? You need to come out on September ninth and then November fourth, I think, I don't want to give the wrong dates.
No, no, you're right, you're right, I had to think about it for a second. Well, that's the thing, I understand that not everybody's like me, that for years, for longer than I hate, that I'd like to admit, is running home, you know, on his way home with his AirPod in, listening to flip-flopping between news stations for entertainment, just because I want to hear the news, how it's being told from different perspectives, how it's, people are taking it in, because you can't be one-sided. I know not everybody does that, especially at a local level. So I think the big thing now is I'm talking to people, and I'm telling them, hey, you know, local politics is not about those divisive issues that you hear every two to four years. It's not, I mean, is there devices? Yeah, but it's right here at home, so it's kind of hard not to get a little excited about it, whether you get mad because somebody said something here, talking to you about an issue that you were passionate about, whatever, it's kind of hard not to get a little more involved, you know? So I'm trying to get people to understand that. So I listen, I talk to them and I listen, oh, well, you know, my street now, we can't park without buying a ticket, and you're okay with that? Well, no, well, then, why didn't, why don't you vote? Because I'm finding out more and more that that's the things that, who you have in office here at the local level, that's the impact that it has, you know, your trash getting picked up. Am I going to sit here and tell you that they're doing a horrible job? That's not up to me. I told you, I think I said this to you off air, that two things that I don't like when politicians say, aye, 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 who cares what you think? You're representing a chunk of people. I don't look at Lowell, Lowell's the United States, the United Nations, you know, it's all about Lowell ultimately, but since we changed to district representation, as the city councillor, hopefully, of District Seven, as much as it will be about Lowell, it'll be about my district, because you would be crazy to tell me that the same issues that affect The Acre affect Belvedere, or affect Patuckyville, or even back central, that's our neighbor, the Highlands. You can't, we all have different issues. You know, we were talking about that earlier, about, you know, you had that, you could tell what part of city you're, what part of town you're driving in, and you could see it in the people, too. We need a leader in The Acre that looks like them, and I don't mean by the color of my skin. I don't know if the audience can see that, but I've been a Mason for twenty-two years that knows their issues, that understands what they're going through, isn't afraid to talk to them and listen to them and advocate for them. So I think that if we go around and we tell people, they say, listen, who's your leader right now? Who's your voice? So what kind of leader, what kind of voice do you want? And we get them excited, that's why I said it's a fifty-fifty issue. It's fifty percent people being so busy in their own lives, just trying to put food on the table. People not having the time, would you rather watch a city council meeting or the Celtics play? I mean, with you, it's a little different, but I'm sure you're doing both.
I'll do both.
You know, I'm the same way, but not everybody.
The Celtics are playing Monday, Wednesday this week.
Not everybody can do that, where, you know, you're putting, you're listening to this, while you're watching that, while you're reading this, but still, you can't, that's why it's a fifty-fifty issue, but the voters need to wake up, because we can't keep doing this, we can't keep doing this. It takes five minutes to vote. We gotta get out there, especially in The Acre. Five hundred and thirty, every time I say that, I get a little, ugh.
You do, a lot of neighborhoods could say that. So you, you kind of touched on a little bit, you, you gave us your background, the immigrant story, very much like so many of us here in Lowell, no matter how long our families have been here. But you've, you've talked about what you do for work, you're a Mason, you showed off your hands, you're, you're a working man, and you sound like a fighter and who's very passionate. What is, what in that background do you think has prepared you to actually sit on a city council, to govern a group of people, as you said, both in The Acre, but also with the well-being of the entire city, also dependent on, on how you vote on certain issues? What's prepared you for that in your background?
No, thank you, that's a, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that, because, you know, being an immigrant, coming here, when I came here, Lowell was very different than what it is now. You know, it was one of those where you drove to Patuckyville, and you can see the French Canadian influence, you know, certain place, you know, you could see it. And there wasn't a lot of Latinos, it was mainly Puerto Ricans, and, you know, Southie Asians were just coming here, this and that. So I got to experience that. So I get to understand the city from a different perspective, from a perspective where I was growing up in this. We grew up, but not very much. So I was one of those kids running, playing in the streets, talking to different people, this and that. Then as a Mason, I started at ten dollars an hour as labor. I'm the foreman, I got guys coming in and out all the time. The responsibility of the job, whether it's customer interactions or the final product, is a hundred percent on my shoulders. I have to be their leader. There's times where I ask these guys to help me lay an eight-hundred-pound rock. Do you think they're going to be willing to put themselves in that, you know, all right, we gotta go up thirty-five feet in the air and fix that chimney? You know, so leading is something that I'm good at, listening to people, teaching people, at least I'd like to tell myself, you know, my guys might say something different, but I doubt it, you know? So I think that bringing that, bringing the ability to solve problems on the fly, look at things from a different perspective, and at the same time, being able to not just derail, being able to relate to people from all aspects, from me working on a million-dollar house in Redding, to walking into my apartment, riding with people, you know, the hood, the ghetto, whatever you want to call it, right in back of the Greek bakery, right in The Acre. Like, I can talk to people, I can listen to them, they can relate.
I grew up on Adams Street till I was six.
You know, I mean, I live right there on Dublin, you know, and, and that's, I've been there for fifteen years.
All right, so you, you mentioned voting and getting people involved and, and getting, turning out the vote, especially in The Acre where the numbers were, and always have been poor. Besides that, besides the involvement of the residents and the citizens in our democracy, what do you see as the most important issues facing the district and then also the city? What, as you walk around and you talk to people, what, what are you hearing and what are you focusing on?
I mean, prices, prices of rent, you know, I mean, especially a lot of people are concerned with when you have Link, you have the frontrunner city, when you have all this, and we're not afraid of development, you can't be. And when I say we, I'm talking about the, I talk to everybody, like, I just, you know, I'm one of those people, I'll find something to talk to, to relate to you with, without being fake, being genuine, and we're going to have a conversation, unless you really don't want to. And you said it in one of the shows a couple of weeks ago, gentrification. Prices are already at a breaking point in The Acre, just to be able to keep a roof over your family's head. And now we're bringing in more market-rate housing, we're not even really pushing the conversation of affordable housing like we were. Now, maybe I'm wrong, because I'm just a bricklayer, you know, but I keep hearing more of a push for market-rate housing than I do for affordable housing. And I'm not saying we're completely against it, you know, bring, so what's going to happen when we're already struggling, and I'm not talking shit about you, Mass, but you have all these students now that are driving the cars of families that want, that have been here, that have made a life here, that want to raise their family, because this is where they grew up? What, what's happening to them now? Where units, I, I don't think I could afford to move to down the street in The Acre right now. What, what are we doing to address that? And again, I'm not trying to single anybody out or say that they're doing a horrible job or anything like that, but, and then we also need the community to help the council. We do, because if they don't know what's going on, because of the engagement, the voter turnout is as much as the engagement. I've been going to the city council meetings for just shy of a year. The only time you see anybody there is when there's an issue. And even when there's an important issue, the community doesn't turn out. So do you think the decisions they're making on that chamber, in that chamber, would be effective if that chamber was filled of the people they represent? It's one thing to, what is it, Mike Tyson, they said it, you know, everybody's tough till they get punched in the mouth.
Everybody has a plan till they get punched in the face.
You know, so you have your, aye, 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 I want to do this, we're going to do this, but your community's in the stands, does that change? And if it doesn't, kudos to you. But if it does, are you there representing your community? And that's the kind of level of things that I think will get the community engaged, because now they're like, well, hold on, maybe, let's try it out. They're voting on this tonight, let's peacefully show up and see what they say now, see if they're still singing the same tune they were singing last week about this issue, when there's people standing out in the hall peacefully and respectfully. You know, things like that, that's civic engagement, that's our job. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues that, I mean, we could spend all day on them, you know, between homelessness in The Acre, I mean, things like that, of course.
Well, let's talk about it, we're chatting with Jose Cervantes, candidate for Lowell City Council. He is vying for the District Seven, The Acre neighborhood seat, it's held by incumbent Paul Ratayem. Jose is one of the candidates in the race, there's another declared candidate, Sidney Liang, so it appears we will have at least a preliminary election in September, if all three of you return your signatures in time, and I assume that that is going to happen, all three of you are going to work very hard. So besides engagement turnout, housing seems to be one of your central issues. The, and you, you highlighted the, the two goals that I think don't match up, the affordable housing versus market-rate housing and gentrification. You sound like you're going to be a fighter for more affordable housing, not, not necessarily be in the way of progress, but to make sure that we create affordable housing. How, how do we do that? How do we do that in, in a city and also in a state where the costs of building anything are so expensive, and where also the, as much as people are living, you know, below poverty lines or below upper income lines, the wages in Massachusetts are higher than in most other parts of the country? Can we continue to have more and more people coming into our communities and be able to satisfy the demand for affordable housing?
And this, I mean, just like everything else, it's a complex issue. If it wasn't, if it wasn't, you know what, we would have solved it already. Let's be honest, yeah, you know, and that's another thing I've been telling people out there, and I won't stray too far from the question, is that if anybody's promising you that they're going to do this, unless they're running for president and they're going to sign an executive order the second they walk in there, there might be a little full of shit. You know, you can do your best, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the truth. You know, you can do your best to solve the issues, to represent your community, but to make empty promises, you don't do that. Maybe this is the Lowell coming out, but you're not in, I'm not in jail, don't make me promises, you know what I mean? But we got to start looking at alternative. I mean, we have empty lots that we can easily convert into housing if we needed to. Maybe we need to start looking deeper into these landlords charging ridiculous amount of money, like you're charging market rate for something that should be, in most cases, even considered affordable housing, or they even up to code. I'm not taking shots at anybody, but I'm saying that we got to start, I do this at work with the guys, where we have a big issue, but you know what, there's a little issue in front of us. While I figure out the big issue, dig that hole, because I'll figure out the height, but you need to remove the step before we pour the footing. So don't worry about all that, let me get to that, get the jackhammer, get that step out of there, we know we got to pour a footing, the only difference is going to be how high we're going to pour it. Let's tackle some of the issues that are in front of us, you know, I said to somebody the other day with the homeless problem and then all the trash and everything like that. Okay, so why don't we just start chaining up some barrels right there and be like, hey, you know, what's the alternative here? You guys want to live like this? Here's some barrels, we'll come and empty them every Thursday. Is it going to solve the problem? It might take some time, but eventually at least it won't be as dirty. You see what I'm saying? There's always something we can do right now. But if we spend too much time focusing on fixing the world, and I used this term earlier, and not getting our house in order, when the dog poops on the floor, you don't spray Febreze, maybe you wait until it cools down a little, but you pick it up, right? So, I mean, we, we need to fix problems, you know, we need to tackle the things we can, like I said, maybe start looking into, and I hate the word, rent control, but maybe start looking into something where it's like, okay, you know what, you're getting funding from CTI, you're getting, you know, you're getting Section Eight, so now how there's government involved, and now we can put a little bit more regulation in you, and maybe we can drive that price down, or at least keep it from getting any higher. You know, and then we can, we, if we decide we're going to build a tenement building here, and it's not going to get built tomorrow, but what about the issue we have right now? Let's tackle some of those things right now.
If, if affordable housing, more affordable housing is going to be built in the city, chances are it will be in the district that you want to represent. And there have been, folks will point to a number of projects, the Acre Crossing, there's a bunch, there's probably more shovels and bulldozers in The Acre right now than anywhere else.
In a long time, too.
In the city. How, how do you think this current council and, and this current administration have fared in terms of creating affordable housing opportunities? Have they, have they put the proper focus on it to your way of thinking?
I think they have, but like I said, I think right now you're starting to see a little bit of a pivot where it's more pushing for market rate. And, you know, the thing, you know, I pointed out earlier, like even, and I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, but what is it, God's land?
Yes, in God's backyard.
In God's backyard. Maybe we should have at least had a conversation about it. The optics of it, if you look at it as a resident-dependent, you know, and, and not saying I agree with him or not, but the fact that Counselor Belanger was just like, that's not for my district. They, you know, we have, again, disagree with him or not, but it's like, all right, I respect that, because you were advocating for your district. But who was the advocate for my district? Because, you know what, affordable housing, it might not be for yours, but it's something that I, I'd like to have a conversation about. You know, it almost seemed more like people were upset that they didn't get a phone call. It was, it almost felt like more of a political move than a people move, so, you know, and again, I'm not trying to get anybody upset, because they're going to see me tomorrow at the council meeting, I don't want anybody not shaking my hand, but, you know, we're talking about the people, that's what matters to me. Like you said earlier, I'm not afraid to tell my truths, and I'm sorry if I offend, but that's the optics of it, you know, I mean, and that's the, so, yeah, in short, I think they were, and now we're kind of pushing more to bring people in. Do we really need to bring more people in? How about we take care of the ones here?
You, you, you may tick off a few people, but whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I, my, my thing is, I, I think people who are challenging an incumbent for a seat need to differentiate themselves from that incumbent, and I'm going to give you a chance to do so in a couple of minutes. But education is about to become a big issue, and the, the school friends that I talk to on the school side of the city are telling me that the city is cutting four million dollars of funding from what they gave them last year. People on the city side are telling me the schools are spending money like drunken sailors on shore leave, and it's time for them to get their own house in order, maybe, you know, trim a little off the top and leave the classroom alone. How do you view the city? Because education is important to you, we've talked out there about your journey through Northern Essex Community College, and how without free community college, your, your journey might not have been possible. How do you think the city has been handling its education? Do you think the city side and the city council have been doing enough to fund the Lowell Public Schools and help them out? Not enough, or are they kind of, you know, have they been doing too much, as some people might argue?
Well, I'd be lying to you if yesterday, when the article came out, and, I mean, yesterday was like every day nowadays, a crazy day. So can I comment on all the exact numbers? No, but I was there when they, when the superintendent and a few other people, you know, were going over the budget, I was there at that council meeting, it was like a month ago, whatever it was, and, you know, maybe it's time we start doing that more, but we, not to echo anything that's coming out of Washington, but at the same token, four million, that's a lot of money. What is it going to affect? Is it going to affect the kids' education, which, let's be honest, we're not bringing any top ten right now. So before we go ahead and pull the trigger on that, we really need to make sure that, all right, maybe they have, I mean, I heard something, again, I'm not really, don't take what I say, because I didn't really dive into it, but something that there was a million dollars already spent and on labor, and it wasn't even, nobody was getting paid, or something crazy like that, again, don't hold me to, I just glanced through it, I have a final coming up this week, so I'm a little busy trying to get boots on the ground. But if there is waste, I mean, sit down, have a conversation. So maybe that money gets allocated to, I've been trying to, I just, I don't even know, I don't feel comfortable saying this, but I just became a member of the Board of Trustees at the Middlesex Childish School, and I love those kids, I told you, I was a minute late because I was talking to them, they were outside. But can that money go somewhere else? What are we doing with that four million? Fourteen million dollars over fifteen years for something that we didn't ask for? You know what I'm talking about, right? When I say that. So is that four million dollars to help that? A wooden structure with, what was it, twenty-one hundred dollar, one-bedroom apartments? Who's that going to help? It's not going to help my people. They're barely struggling to pay, they, I mean, they're probably struggling to pay that for a three-bedroom right now. So is it justified? I'd have to look at it to make sure, like, all right, well, they do have a lot of waste. If they have a lot of waste, and that money can't be allocated somewhere else where it's actually going to help, I've been trying to push, I'm talking to different people. What do we have for eighth grade or freshman sophomores for after-school programs in the city? That doesn't include a parent paying, or, you know, the kid being super talented at a sport, or, or, you know, something like that? Just for kids to go hang out and, damn, phone never stops, hang out and get acclimated. That, that time period in the kid's life and youth development is so crucial, especially in a place like Lowell, and especially when parents away, working what, two jobs? At least one of them, or both of them working? What's the kid doing when they get out of school? Going from eighth grade to freshman, which is already a huge deal, as it was, just me walking up the stairs to walk in here to talk to you was a huge deal. Imagine new school, new friends, maybe even new communities? Okay, and now, forget all that, now they're going from being a teenager to being a young adult. What are we doing for services like that? So can we grab some of that four million dollars? Give me a million of that real quick, and we'll start like a little program where the kids can go, and instead of going in the street, they go play some basketball, they get some help, maybe a little mental health, too. It's something growing up, how I grew up, we didn't really talk about. It's something growing up, how I grew up, we didn't really talk about that, but like, it's very real. How do you expect these kids to transition? I'm not saying they they're not going to, but we gotta set kids up for success. That's how we keep money here, instead of bringing people in to fill these good paying jobs, whether it's in Boston or. We raise them here and we become where people call, hey, I need a biotech guy. I know you guys are killing it over there, cause Middlesex is, they're doing great with that. UMass is offering a free program, four week course, you go there, do some biotech and then they get you a job. They actually pay you to go, if I wasn't doing all this, I'd be going, they pay you three hundred and fifty bucks, four weeks, who knows about that? Like, we need, that's what, that's how we help ourselves. By helping our youth, by helping educating our people, whether it's to vote or to get that free education. And we keep those people here, instead of pushing them out and bringing other people in. They say if you give a millionaire a thousand dollars, they spend none of it. You give a person like me a thousand dollars, they spent, I think it was eleven fifty. Because now they're at the store and they're charging that card, you know, so let's stop. The the this whole notion that we're gonna bring these rich people in here and they're gonna pour money into the community, yeah, maybe they'll throw something. Pour a couple bucks into a charity so they can get a tax write-off. You know, that, sorry, that was a long version, I talk a lot.
So. My, one of my beliefs, which you talked about earlier, is that it's difficult to beat an incumbent. To energize people to come out and vote, to unseat somebody who people generally like and will always say they're doing a good job. There we go, change the hat.
I have to.
But I I always feel the challengers, the one thing they do poorly, and especially I've seen it here in Lowell elections since we've gone to district representation. Is they don't differentiate themselves from the incumbent that they're trying to unseat, they don't state the differences. Why should I vote for you as opposed to the incumbent? So here's your chance, how will you be different? If you are elected, how will you be different than the, than Paul Ratayem? Who has represented that district since its inception in twenty twenty-two?
Well, let me start by saying I've met him multiple times, nice guy. Really nice guy, but. We need a leader. I I can't stress that enough, you know, I think, I don't know if we talked about this off air, if we talked about this when we were recording, but. I look at Lowell as, you know, Lowell United Nations, you know, where we have eight districts. And of course, the most important part is the health of the city. It's people, it's everything, it's infrastructure, everything, but we have eight districts. You cannot tell me, and I think I said this already on the air, you cannot tell me that District Seven has the same issues as District Three. Damn it, you can't even tell me that any given time we're the same people. We are, cause we're all proud to be from that's where the shirt, which I think I'm gonna call my uh. My my lady today and these might start going on sale by the end of the week, thirty-five bucks, you know, it's not as about, as much as about making money, it's about. The recognition and showing pride in your community, but the biggest thing is I want to be a voice. I'm not gonna sit here, people can go look at the city council meetings, look up the repertoire and they can make their own decisions. I called them before I announced, and I said, I'm gonna run against you. I wanna keep it about the issues and what I'm trying to do. Keep it respectful, if you don't want to, you just give me the word. We talked about this earlier, I've been doing my homework. I've been doing my homework, if you wanna, you want, you you wanna come, you wanna throw stones in the glass house, go for it, cause I'm an open book. You know, you're not gonna say much about me that I'm gonna deny, or that I'm gonna give you excuses for. Shit happens, we all make mistakes, we all grow up, and that's all that matters, is where we are today, not where we were yesterday. And I think that's the big difference between me and him. That I'm not afraid to voice my opinion, I'm not afraid to advocate for my community, and that's what I wanna do. You know, you said earlier, you look like a fighter, I'm a black bow in taekwondo, I'm a black bow in Hokkito. Uh, you came here, my story, blah, 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 which again, I consider a success story, fighting is something I've done my whole life. I wanna advocate for the people, I wanna be a voice, I want them to be proud of the person that represents them. When I walk the streets and people don't know who their counselor is, again, fifty fifty issue, why? Why? You should be like, I don't worry about them, I just call Jose, he got you, bro, call him up. That's that's not okay, you got a ticket for parking in front of your house? What do you mean? Call Jose up, see what he has to say. Like, oh, really? Oh, man, let me see what I can do, I'll call you back. I'm gonna tell you I'm gonna fix all your problems, you're crazy, I wish I could, but I can't. But damn it, you're gonna hear my loud mouth up there talking about it, you know, and and I think that's what we don't have right now, we don't have somebody talking about it.
Alright, you you've stated some differences, um, we're gonna wrap it up in a couple of minutes, but we we did talk a little bit off air. About your heritage, Latino, Spanish, Mexican, um, there, we have not had. Uh, Frankie Dakota was the uh, to my knowledge, and George Ramirez were the only two um, Latino. City councils we've had, we haven't had one since we switched to district representation, which was implemented to help the. Hispanic community get representation, others as well, but you know, it's interesting, we've, we've always had South East Asian representatives. We uh, went from two to three with the new system of government, one of them in in your district. We also had our first African American elected to the council in District Two. We've not had, since district representation, a Hispanic counselor elected, we have three candidates running. Is that a source of pride for you, just to actually have that many involved? Or will the the battle be won when somebody gets elected, whether it's this year or a future year?
I don't speak for the other candidates, I know them, good, good people. But, of course, you know, there's pride in anything you do. Especially being, you know, like you said, with the story, with the background, which I try not to spend too much time on, because like I said to you off air, like, there's many people that. You know, I'm a success story, there's many people that unfortunately aren't here with us, my brother be one of them. And, you know, so I don't look at it as that, but. I don't want to be a city counselor for the Latino community. I don't want to be a city counselor for the Asian community, I don't want to be, and so on, and so on. The biggest joy that I will have in November will be if. I am the next representative, next voice of the acre. But we're at least top three on the voter turnout. You see what I'm saying to you? So, I can just, I can almost exclusively concentrate on getting Latinos to vote and. That's it, but no, I can't do that. If they get out and vote just because I'm Latino, I don't know how I feel about that. I'll be honest with you, because there's nothing worse a politician says to me than what they're gonna do for the Latino community. I think I stated that earlier, as you could tell, it's a problem, I don't like it. Because by you saying that, you're telling me that I'm less, that I'm less than you. That I'm gonna work, that I'm not gonna work as hard as you. No, I'm gonna work just as hard. If not, I'm gonna have a little bit of a chip on my shoulder and I might work a little harder, because I feel like I'm being judged because of the color of my skin. Not saying that's the case, but you know what I'm saying, like, so no, I mean, of course, you know how awesome it would feel? I think I might be the first Mexican politician in Massachusetts.
Interesting.
Not just the first Latino city councillor since, you know, the district representation here. I really, I gotta dive into that, but I'm pretty sure I'll be the first Mexican. Of, you know, the first individual of Mexican descent, actually, I am Mexican, so I don't know if that's considered descent, but. First Mexican-born politician in Massachusetts. So that could be one of those things people look at it like it's history in the making, but until you bring it up, I don't think about it.
Alright, who uh, who, do you have a political idol? Do you have a a politician that you've looked at, you you say, you know what, I'd like to, I'd like to govern, I'd like to serve as they have?
One, no, moments, moments that politicians have that I'm like, not a boy? Yeah, but like I said to you early off here, I'm more of a uh, politician, isn't somebody. In Washington pushing papers, you know, politician is, you know, the old school Roman Greek philosophers, you know, like. You know, that, to me, that's a good politician, so plenty of people like that, that have never actually have the title politician.
Interesting, you said moments. What's, what's a moment?
Moments like. Oh, you're putting me on the spot here, that's tough, cause literally my brain is just. Like the timeline and it's just like a million things zipping by, um. Most recent, and it wasn't like about what they, it was about what they did, like when. And I guess going back to the Latino thing, when Obama was able to unite so many people to get out and vote. And it wasn't about his policies, it wasn't about, cause I'm not really, I'm not one of those, I I I'm more common sense. But it was the fact that he was able to not change people's minds. I think we talked about this off here, but change people's hearts. The way he did it, whether you agreed with him or not, you gotta, you you gotta respect that, you gotta appreciate that, you know, moments like that when. People bring the country together, that, more like that, you know.
I I felt the same, I felt a sense of pride in the country back on that November night in two thousand eight. Alright, we've talked a lot about the issues, uh, a lot more will pop up between now, it's May sixth. When we're recording this, as we mentioned, the preliminary election in your district, if it's had, which we think it will, September ninth. And then the general election, Tuesday, November fourth. Uh, you're gonna start to do some neighborhood groups and meetings and candidate forums, and we'll hopefully host one here, I'd love to have you in the, your uh. Opponents here, but if folks wanna learn more about you now, if they, if they like what they heard here and they wanna learn more, especially about other issues. How do they get ahold of you? How do they learn more about your campaign, website, social media, do you have it all set up?
Yeah, 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 I got a Facebook, Jose Cervantes. I don't know if you can see that, but, you know, look me up on Facebook, Jose the Jesus, I got another one where it's like. Cervantes for the acre, I don't really post too much on that, because a lot of the following I have was on my main Facebook. So you can go on there and you can see pictures of me breaking boards from Taekwondo, my my black bow and Taekwondo days and stuff like that, cause there is personal stuff. Like I said, I'm a, I'm an open book, I'm not gonna.
And and a lot of videos where you're not shy about sharing your opinion, you've shared an awful lot of videos where you talk about individual issues and things happening.
Follow me on there, you know, I'm just, I'll leave you with this, I'm just a regular person trying to represent you guys, I'm not. Trying to sell your dream, I want you guys to have your voices heard. Obviously the acre, but everybody, like that's, this is a call for everybody, I really want record voter turnout, because. This is one of those instances where it's so crucial. Don't look at this as just something that's gonna affect City Hall, but it starts here. If you start changing at the local level, eventually when the State House comes knocking, the people that are there. They can tell them where to go and how to get there, or they can tell them, come on in. And if we change here and we change the State House, eventually, Washington is elected by us. Washington, the government is the people, we need to take that back, show up September ninth, show up November fourth. And show them that we're waking up and we're taking our power back. Leave you with that, Jose Cervantes on Facebook, go check it out.
Alright, Jose Cervantes, thank you so much for joining us here, good luck on the campaign trail, I'm sure we will uh, cross paths many times. Now in September and maybe even November.
I got some ducks with cowboy hats and I wanna give you a.
Thank all of you for joining us as well, hopefully you enjoyed this inside view of our latest candidate here, vying for Lowell City Council seat. Um, and hopefully you learned a little something about him, and hopefully you learned a little something about issues, and as he said. You do educate yourself and you do get involved and head on out there to vote. Thank you so much for joining us here, uh, reminder, we'll have more uh, candidate interviews coming up in the coming weeks. I know we've booked up Francisco Maldonado, uh, Dan Finn, working on a couple of more that still have not been here. And who knows, maybe some surprise candidates will emerge between now and uh, the deadline to return signatures, although. Time is running short, if you're thinking of running, you better get a move on, cause people like Jose have already got a hell of a head start on you. Everybody stay safe, uh, uh, till next time, we'll catch you on the other side.